All right, good to go. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM and if we can all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so before we move to public comment, we'll just go over the ground rules again. Before you speak, please state your name and before you start talking, just so people know who you are, try to raise your hands. I can see everybody's screen, so we'll keep some order like always, so we're not talking over each other. We have a lot of discussion tonight where there's probably going to be input from us. So just want to make sure everybody's thoughts are properly recorded into the record. So with that, we'll move on to item number three, which is public comments. Rory, have we received any public comments?
We have one public comment.
Okay, can you read that into the record?
The public comment is from Stefan Bavouniak. And it reads as follows, "I would like to submit the following public comment in regards to agenda item number eight. I would like to express my concern over the recommended hiring of an individual by the Economic Development Commission. While the individual recommended for the role may, on the surface, appear qualified for the job, I have a lot of doubts about this individual's ability to provide quality service to the taxpayers of Seymour. My issue with this potential hire is twofold. One, I believe that the government of Ansonia over the past five to 10 years has been a complete failure. Ansonia has had numerous lengthy and inappropriate legal battles, has been overcome by terrible financial management, and appears directionless and incapable of dealing with and overcoming challenges. I will not get into the specifics as widely publicized and known by the elected members of this board. The individual who is potentially up for hire as Economic Development Director served as a prominent member of the administration in Ansonia. As a policy, I believe that the town of Seymour must clear a sharing services and strategy with such a rudderless municipality until such time that there is a leadership change there. My second concern is more general. By its very nature, many aspects of economic development in general, in relation to neighboring communities, is a zero-sum game. When a business is looking to move into the area, I want and the taxpayers deserve someone whose sole focus is growing the grand list of Seymour and bettering our community. I do not believe that one individual should be serving similar roles in neighboring and oftentimes competing communities. Having served as a member of this board for four years, I understand how difficult it can be to come across qualified and competent candidates for the role of Economic Development Director. It is no joy that I strongly urge you to not consider taking the Economic Development Commission's recommendation before you tonight."
Okay. Is that the only public comment that we received?
It is.
Okay. All right, so with that, we will close at least this portion of public comments. And we'll move on to item number four, approve the minutes from the April 21st, 2020. Just make that note on your agenda. Regular meeting, have a motion to do so? So that was Trish and Al. Motion made by Trish, second by Al. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Chair votes on motion passes 7-0. Okay, first selectmen's reports. There's kind of two parts to this. One, we'll go through a little bit more quickly. The second one might take a little bit longer and Rory will kind of tag team it a little bit with me. But I've been asking our financial team to keep a close eye on how we're faring compared to last year because of the COVID crisis. So I've been getting reports from Dana Flock, our tax collector, to get an idea as to where we are with regards to collections. So for this current fiscal year, as of today at 4 o'clock, we had collected 98.02% on the current 2018 grand list. In comparison to last year, we were at 98.34 at the end of May. So with roughly, you know, 12 days to go, we're chasing about 31 basis points. Are we going to be able to make that up? Who knows? But we are definitely lagging behind, so I want you to keep that in mind as we have additional conversations. Collections to date, including back taxes, interest liens, and water assessments as of today is $44,255,939.21. In comparison, for the end of May last year, we were at $44,237,774. So we're actually about 18 or so thousand ahead of where we were last year at this time. But again, we're projected to collect $376,000 more. So we are definitely lagging in this area, so it's something that we're going to continue to keep an eye on. So I just wanted to pass that information along. I'll try to provide you an update every meeting, so you know where we stand. But if you have any questions, I mean, please, you know, let myself know, let Doug Thomas know. We can certainly walk you guys through that. With regards to the reopening, we have a tentative plan in place, but we're waiting to see what the governor says tomorrow, because as we know, unfortunately, the governor has made some decisions and then changed his mind at the last second. So we want to see what he actually says tomorrow before we release anything official. But this is kind of what we've been talking about, and I've talked to some of you over the last, you know, six or eight weeks about what our tentative plans are. But effective June 1st, we're going to reopen Town Hall. And by reopening Town Hall, we're going to have every department open every day. It's going to be by appointment only. Staff will work on a rotating basis, so you have one person that'll work Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The other person will work Tuesday, Thursday. We're going to continue to keep an attendant right at the main door, so that way they can organize people as they're coming in. If you don't have an appointment, then you are going to either have to wait or you could potentially be turned away. Again, we're going to try to protect our staff as best we can for the month of June. The library and the community center are going to remain closed to the public. Staff will come in on an as-needed basis. The library, our librarian, has identified a bunch of projects that she'd like to have the staff come in to start working on. So we're going to let her bring staff in at her discretion, again, with, you know, the appropriate social distancing and things. The community center staff will, again, Mary's here, but she will dictate how that staff would come in and out. They're all set up to work remotely. And the one thing we know, the governor has said, if you don't need to come in, don't come in. The building will not be open to the public, but if they do need to come in for some time, they're certainly able to do that. We have, we're building, or we have basically built a color-coded system, which we will send out to everyone tomorrow for comment. It's basically, and Rory can elaborate a little bit more, but it's, you know, red, yellow, orange, green. So that way, if things change, we can simply say, okay, we're going to go from red to orange, from orange back to red, that type of thing, and everyone will understand what that means. So we're going to try to simplify it a little bit. But again, we'll send that to everyone for feedback once we hear from the governor. And our goal will be to communicate this to the public either on Thursday or Friday. With regards to parks, the goal will be to start opening things up on the 23rd. Again, assuming the governor doesn't come out with anything, you know, completely off the wall tomorrow. Fields and walking areas, you know, Bungay Fields, Chatfield Park Walking Track, the high school track, things like that. We're going to open those up. People are going to have to wear masks, social distancing, that whole, you know, whatever the requirements are. We are not going to allow any organized sports in the fields. I mean, if a father and son or, you know, mother and son want to go out and have a catch in the field, that's completely fine. But no, you know, baseball games or anything of that nature. All playgrounds and basketball courts are going to remain closed. So that's where we're going to start off, and then we will slowly expand on that based on, again, what we see is going on, how the residents are doing with it, and then any medical changes or recommendations that are coming down from the state. The building stuff, we're going to lock that in for the entire month of June, and then we'll reevaluate that and make a determination for July 1st. The public spaces, the parks and things, we may change those even week to week, depending on how things are going and how things are improving. Obviously, we want to provide as much outdoor activity as we possibly can for the residents, but at the same time, being as cautious as we possibly can, so. But all of that will be put together. Kathy Verlich, who I think everybody knows, has volunteered to help us kind of with marketing and pushing this information out to the residents. So she'll be working closely with my office to get that squared away. But again, everyone should expect to see a draft tomorrow night. We're going to need your feedback back quickly, so that way we can roll this out to the residents at some point late Thursday. Hopefully, you know, dinner time, we'll do a code red call, and then we'll put everything out onto the internet. So Rory, anything you want to add that I missed?
Just that, you know, that's kind of the broad strokes. We identified a bunch of HR, not issues, but concerns based on the governor's guidance that we're working through, some policies that we're putting in place to reduce the employees' exposure and to process things in as safe a way as possible. And then there will be physical modifications to the building. However, some of those, you know, we're discussing Plexiglas at points of service, that kind of thing. But until the public is in the buildings, we're holding off on that because we have to work with the fire marshal and the building inspector to make sure that everything that we're doing is, of course, safe for the staff and the public. But we welcome any feedback that you guys have. We want to make this, you know, as safe and successful as we can.
So any quick questions at this point? Rob?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I'm not sure, what's the mechanism for finding out? Let's say you open up parks, you know, on June 1st, start breaking out. How is it relayed to you? If my neighbor tested positive, what's the mechanism for anyone in Town Hall to find out?
Ask that question again? I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly.
As cases, how have you found out about any of the cases that have come up? That's just a mechanism. I wasn't sure how that worked out. Are you notified by a hospital based on the patient's ID? If I were to fall sick and I just went to the hospital and they tested?
Nogatuck Valley Health, Jess and her staff are compiling that information, and they send a daily report out to us. It's just a text message, but what she'll say is there were four people affected today, and, you know, two people passed away. There were, you know, six people infected today, that type of thing. So generally, break it down between what she'll call residents and shady null. Obviously, there's a difference between there. But we don't have, we don't get specific names, ages, anything like that. So it's just kind of an overall number. Our first responders know that. So they know that, you know, if they went to, let's say you did have it. Once we're made aware of that, Jess actually calls Northwest Public Safety and says, okay, the Van Agen home at, you know, such and such street is active for COVID. So that way, all of our first responders know. Nine out of 10 times, they're treating it as if everybody is positive. But it's better when they know that, yes, this one truly is positive. So they may grab the extra face shield, they may put on whatever it is they, extra that they would do.
Oh, good. So that was my concern, is so you know on a daily basis. So you'd be able to, we'll be able to react very quickly if we see a trend happening. Or if nothing's happening, we're going to be able to back that up. That's good.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, she uses that information to build that email that you guys are getting every day. So it's, that's where that comes from.
Thank you.
That's, that's kind of generic for the whole valley, but I do get a text every day. Well, I shouldn't say most days, so. All right, Chris, you raise your hand?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification. I've had a few select constituents ask me this, as you're aware. The parks and the walking tracks are going to be opening come Saturday?
Tentatively, yes. Again, I don't want to say 100%, because I don't know what the governor's going to say tomorrow. I'm not 100% sure the governor knows what he's going to say tomorrow. So we'll wait to see what he actually comes out with, and then we'll make that determination. But assuming it's what we anticipate it to be, then yes.
They will be open.
Anybody else? No? Okay, good. All right, so we're going to move on to item number six, discussion, take possible action regarding Seymour Recreation Summer Camp. We have Mary, she's in the, I don't know, for mainly, she's in the lower left corner. You can see her there. So Mary and her staff have spent a tremendous amount of time trying to decide if opening summer camp makes the most sense. We just received in the last few days, a series of rules from, from the state as to how a camp need to operate, and I'm going to let Mary get into all of that. But before we do, and I don't want to steal any of Mary's thunder, but they went as far as to try to prepare a model for keeping camp running as it is, running a camp that's completely virtual, and then also looking at a camp that's kind of a combination of the two. They polled all of the folks that have been to camp over the years to get their opinions. So again, we reached out to the people who would be the end users to get how they feel. So that's kind of where we are. So what, we're going to need to make a decision, and I want this decision because of the scope of it, I guess, and the impact it's going to have to be made by this board. So Mary is going to kind of walk us right up to where we are today, give us the background, and at that point, I'm going to give you what the recommendation is, and then we'll go from there. So Mary, why don't you start off, and then we'll just kind of ask questions. If you have a question, raise your hand. I'll see it, and then I'll stop Mary and we'll kind of go from there. So Mary?
Hi, everybody. Mary McNellis. Thank you for having me. So as Kurt mentioned, over the last several weeks, we have looked at a variety of solutions of running a successful, successful summer camp during this pandemic, which is very, very challenging. The solutions included everything from smaller group sizes, camps for just essential workers, for essential workers' children, to virtual camps. So we looked at a number of different options. The two limiting factors for running a successful camp, first and foremost, it's the health and safety of our, our children, their families, and our staff members. That's number one. And then the second really limiting factor is the cost to be able to do all of this. And, you know, it is, it is very costly. As many of you probably know, the CDC and the OBC, which is the Office of Early Childhood Education, have come out with very strict guidelines for every business, but including, including the operations of summer camps and summer programs. If you're not aware, I'm just going to touch really briefly, not on all of the guidelines, but a couple, so that you guys just get, kind of get a feel for it. Some of the guidelines include things like screening of the children as they come to our camp. So cars pull up, we would have to take temperatures of every single child in the car. We would have to ask three to four questions of every child in that car. We cannot get within six feet of that car unless we have PPE on, correct? So just the process right there is daunting. Children would have to be limited to 10 per counselor. All of these groups have to be separated six feet. They cannot interact at all throughout the day. Intensified cleaning and disinfectant of equipment, bathrooms, common areas must take place across the board. We're estimating that we would have to hire an additional two attendants to do nothing but clean. And this means every time a child goes into the bathroom, we have someone going in there and cleaning down. Every high-touch surface, we clean down. It's daunting, you know, it's daunting of what we would have to do. We also need, if we, our plans are to hold this out at Gary Park, we need to have a plan for an indoor facility or coverage if, for some reason, inclement weather comes in, so that you guys understand. This means that not only, let's say we have tents and we cancel all of a sudden, and parents are coming, tents have metal, but let's just say we have pavilions, whatever we have, we still have to distance those groups six feet apart. So I just want to kind of give you an idea of some of the guidelines that we're looking at and we're trying to solve, you know, the problems. So even with the most stringent protocols and screening processes in place, it's going to be very difficult to ensure that a COVID-19 outbreak does not take place and that we're able to really keep our families and our children and our staff safe. So that you know, and Kurt mentioned it, as an alternative to this traditional camp model, we looked at a virtual camp and doing virtual camps. We actually went out and surveyed our residents. The response was not good. I will let you know. And not surprisingly so, the majority of our parents said, you know, our kids have been on a computer for the past three months. We don't want them doing that anymore. So unfortunately, we kind of put that on hold. It's still kind of in, you know, it's in within reach. So we may have to revert back to that, but it's there. But that was the response to that. After speaking also with several towns recently, many towns right now are just at a total standstill. Many are contemplating the complete cancellation of the 2020 camp season. Woodbridge has already canceled their season. Oxford has canceled their travel, their travel camp. They've delayed the opening of their Husky camp, which is like their traditional camp, which we have. So our plans right now is that we're going to continue to follow the news that comes out from the CDC and the OBC, the Office of Education, Early Childhood Education. But at this time, our expectation and really our recommendation is that we do not run our traditional summer recreation camp. You know, be assured, this is a really difficult decision, and we want to, we want to have camp. My staff really wants to have camp. If, for some reason, the CDC and the OBC loosen their guidelines, we'll reevaluate our position, we'd like to reevaluate our position, and look at running a modified camp later in the summer. In order for us to do, be able to do this, we would have to make a decision on running this modified camp by June 15th, just so that we can get everything in place, our supplies, our staffing, our locations, and so, so forth. So that's really where we are right now. Our plans in the coming weeks, while we're kind of waiting this out and seeing what's going to happen over the next couple of weeks, our plans are possibly looking at releasing some virtual camps, a little different than what we were originally thinking, but some programs that we can just throw out to parents where it's not going to be a three or four-hour camp. It's going to be a mad science program. It's going to be a hobby quest program. It's going to be an hour or two here and there, so that parents will have something to give their kids that will replace that traditional camp, but also still keep them engaged in an activity and socializing with their friends. It would most likely take place via Zoom or YouTube or something like that. So that's really where we are right now. I'm open to, you know, questions, comments, anything anyone has.
All right, so if you have a question, again, raise your hand, and you can ask away. Either myself, Mary, Rich, I mean, we had Rich kind of look at the legal aspects and the type of exposure and things like that. So, I mean, if anybody has a question, Rich could certainly jump in on that, but I think Bob had his hand up first, so we'll go with Bob.
Yeah, Mary, this question is familiar, it's often like, um, did you consider maybe, for a time period, maybe giving them projects that they can do at home that would keep them interested, to give them something that you were giving out from a camp perspective, and they all work on a project and they have to submit it back, things like that?
We looked at, for our virtual camp, we looked at like kind of a camp in a box scenario, where we would pack up supplies and different projects, send them home to the parents. We do kind of a curbside pickup.
Okay, so that was part of the virtual?
It was part of the virtual, but it was also things that they could either do during the virtual. Like we had a, we had a cooking segment, but it was no-bake cooking segment, you know? We had a physical ed section where they could either do it through the virtual camp or they can go do it on their own in a recorded setting. So we looked at kind of some smaller little things like that, that we can kind of pack up and send off. We looked at arts and crafts, kind of doing a packed arts and crafts box that we could just send off and they could do it on their own.
And that's what the parents didn't like when you served?
I will say the parents really didn't like the virtual aspect of it, them being on Zoom again, let's say, and, you know? But
That's a little different, giving them some type of task and then?
Yeah, the biggest response, so Bob, I got to tell you, is, and all the comments we got is, we do not want our kids inside. We want our kids outside, running, playing, socializing. You know, that's the biggest thing we took away from the survey.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't see any other hands, so I want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. If anybody's looking for some light reading, Rich did prepare a 10-page memo with regards to this. So if you want to read that, that, I believe that's in your packets, so you can certainly go through and take a look at that. So what, based on Mary's recommendation, and this is, I guess it's not an official vote, but more of a consensus, if anybody has an issue, but I think the plan is going to be, we're going to put out probably tomorrow, Mary can do that through her community service channels and directly to the folks that have been in the camp. Tentatively, camp is canceled for the 2020 summer season, but we will not make a 100% final determination until June 15th. So if something does change, we could maybe change, and as, you know, Mary had said, maybe we offer a four-week camp the end of July, the beginning of August, that type of thing. But I want folks be able to start preparing and looking for other alternatives, so this just isn't a bomb to drop on them. But we'll make that final decision on June 15th. So is there anyone that has an issue at all with any of that? Is everyone comfortable with that? Because obviously, there's going to be some people that are going to be upset. So before we put that out, I just want to make sure that everyone on the board is comfortable, because you're definitely going to hear from your constituents who use the camp, that this is not going to be available. And again, I don't want to put this decision on, and not that you guys are not volunteers, but I don't think it's fair to drop this decision on the Recreation Commission, because those folks really are volunteers. I mean, they just want to have programming and good stuff going on in town. You know, you guys have stepped forward to be selecting, that's a little bit different. You could handle a little bit more of the abuse that may come with this. So that's why I want the decision to come from this board and not dropped in the, in the poor folks on the Recreation Board's lap. So, so Chris just put his hand up.
Just real quick, basically, this, we're deciding now to cancel 2020 camps, pending a decision at latest of June 15th. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, we're going to put out that camp is tentatively canceled and that we will make a 100% decision on June 15th, that people should probably start preparing other options for camps or childcare or doing activities with their kids for the summer. Sanka, is my understanding as well, will not be running a summer camp.
And the state has specifically prohibited day camps until the 22nd. Am I reading this memo right?
Yes.
So they're tentatively canceled, and even if we wanted to run them, we really can't.
You couldn't start one until the 22nd at the earliest. And then if you were to run one, as Mary mentioned, and as Rich has outlined in his memo, the guidelines are very, very strict. What we normally, you know, we, one of the values of the Seymour camp, I think, number one, it's a good camp, and it's definitely improved every year over the last several years, but it's the price. I don't think anybody can argue what Several years, but it's the price. I don't think anybody can argue what we charge for what we provide. We couldn't come close to being able to charge what we normally do with the restrictions that would be placed on us. It just wouldn't be. It just wouldn't work.
We have a responsibility to keep our constituents safe.
Yeah. Listen, this is, I can tell you, this was not an easy decision for Mary and her staff. They agonized for this. I think this is something they definitely did not want to give up on, but there's just only so much that you can do. Um, and the way things look, um, I would expect that we're going to cancel on the fifteenth. But just in case something changes, we'll we'll leave a little room uh to maybe make that decision.
So Kurt. Yeah, Kurt, I just had a quick question followed to what you just said. So you basically did a cost benefit analysis too, as well as a safety analysis. And you're making basing this decision on the recommendation of federal, state, us as local entities. Not to go forward, but there is a sliver of hope that we may be able to have a camp for about four weeks. Starting on June fifteen, if things trend in an upward fashion with this pandemic. And kids are able to to go to a camp and but then it would still depend on registration numbers, correct?
Yeah, it would depend on what rules and um requirements were in place at that point. At that point, Mary would calculate a price and then we would see how many people sign up. But you know, that expectation of a camp that's going to cost, you know, what do we, I think on the high side, we're about three hundred dollars for the entire summer. Uh, I think we'd be substantially higher than not even for a shorter camp. But you know, if that's the only option, well, just Mary, if that's the only option that people have, they may pay it. You know, if if that's the only camp your kids can go to and it may be worth five hundred bucks for, you know, three weeks, just to get your kids out of the house and have something, yeah.
Let's see what registration look like, right?
Just so I can clarify Al, yes, just so that I can clarify Al, the camp would not start on June fifteen. We would make a decision on whether or not we would.
When would it start?
It would not start till the end of July. I need a, I need a minimum, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I need a minimum of four to five weeks to hire staff, get supplies. I mean, we have our staff ready to go, but we haven't, we haven't, you know, we have to hire staff. We have to solidify all of our supplies. We don't want to go out and put out dollars right now on a camp that may not happen. I am, I am estimating right now, I have about twelve thousand dollars in additional expenses. Okay, due to due to us trying to meet the protocols that the CDC and the OVC have put out. So we would make a decision on June fifteenth. We would not most likely start the camp till July twenty seventh. And then we would, then we would run to about August twentieth. And the challenge with that, although I'm fairly confident we could pull it off if we can meet the CDC and the OVC guidelines. Is that we now have to be able to get all of our supplies. You know, our masks, ours hand sanitizer, our porta potty, everything we need to do. We also need to be able to hire staff and my high school staff and my colleges may be back in session. So now I'm looking at a different model. I just want to make sure everyone's aware of, you know. I think there's going to be people looking for jobs, so I think that we probably could fulfill the need if we can pull it off, but.
Right, but there's a lot of logistical moving is my question and I just wanted to have an idea. What it would take to have it come together and it sounds like a lot.
It would and do it pulling a camp off in four weeks, even as well prepared as we are, this is a whole different model for us, you know, so. It'll be a bit of a challenge, but we'll, if we can do it, we want to run camp, so if we can do it and they. And they release their guidelines and we could meet them, we're all for it, trust me, trust me.
If I may just jump in for a second, Rich Patrulla. In addition to the ten person pod concept, those that have looked at uh our memo. There's also a thirty person maximum. On on in terms of running a camp, and I don't know how many usually get by registration. I have a feeling you get more than thirty. You would have to get a waiver from the state in order to take more than thirty. So you have, there is also that factor. You have to have a facility that's sufficient to be able to do that. I know one extremely large urban camp. That applied for a way, they usually take three hundred and fifty and applied for a waiver and that number was cut way down. Based on the size of the facility and the social distancing that the state wants to maintain. So there are a lot of variables. You saw all the different onerous uh provisions. That the state's requiring all in the name of safety, but Mary's right, it's a very daunting task. I I think that's.
A daunting task involving children, not to mention.
Right, absolutely.
And we'll just call it kinetic energy. Alright, so any other thoughts, comments? A this. Okay, alright, Mary, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
For your uh time and effort that you put into this.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Alright, item number seven, discussion, take possible action regarding cash reserve policies. Okay, so in your packets, we're going to start, there's two things we're actually going to do um tonight. Now, the cash reserve policy, which you have in your packets, and I'll kind of hold it up just so everybody knows. What we're referring to, it's this one. This is, this has been the policy that we've had in place on how we would handle our fund balance. This was this determined through the Strategic Planning Commission in conjunction with the Board of Finance. They put some parameters in place based on how if once we cross a certain level of fund balance, once you cross a certain threshold. If we were to go below that threshold, we would need to put specific plans in place as to how we would get back up and so forth. We had everything, all the verbiage said fund balance, fund balance, fund balance, if you recall. Two years ago, we made some changes to our cash reserve. Uh, it's no longer just fund balance, but we also have some of that cash reserve and debt service. And we also have it in an interest service or an internal services fund, depending on how you want to call it. So we were with S and P two weeks ago, um, because we have not gone out to bond yet. They wanted to do a refresher rating with us, so they kind of took us through our paces again to see what's changed in the last three months since we actually got our rating. What are the impacts uh regards to uh the COVID crisis on our financials, things like that. One of the things that they brought up was this policy and how the policy, uh even though we act the way we do, which they're one hundred percent fine. With the policy always said fund balance, fund balance, fund balance. So what they wanted us to do was simply go through the process of updating this policy with the corrected words. So if you go down to um appendix A, financial plans, number one, fund balance guidelines. If you go to the last bullet point, it says this designation of OFB funds will be the total of unassigned general fund balance. Assigned fund balance and financial statements and the balances of the debt service and internal services fund. So all we're doing is just essentially updating this policy. By adding that last section that says and the balances in service and internal services fund. S and P just wants that on the record because in our expectations to them, while we took these steps in what we thought was prudent. To defend the town of Seymour against uh OPM and their potential rating of towns municipal dollars. Based on the strength of their fund balance, I think we took the prudent step by lowering our fund balance by moving this money to. Recategorizing this money into a debt service fund and to an internal services fund, all still counting towards our overall fund balance. S and P understands that, they're on board with it, they just want a policy that matches that says that. Their concern is the six, the seven of us are no longer on the board. It's four or five years down the road, a new group comes in. And there's not going to be that consistency, so they're just simply asking for that. So what I want to do is entertain a motion. To approve the new language uh for our, what we'll call our fund balance guidelines. As presented, and again, that's the bottom, the proposed appendix A financial plan. I have a motion to do so. Alright, so a motion by Anne Marie and a second by Trish. Under discussion, is there any questions on this? It's pretty simple and straightforward.
Yeah, Kurt, I just had a couple of quick questions.
Okay, Trish, go ahead, because you raised your hand.
Al, go ahead, it's okay.
Leave, but I'll let Trish go because I'm a gentleman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, I just want, I just want to make sure Strategic Plan has this or a copy of their binder, since this is um where it developed from.
Uh, yes, once it's approved, it will be placed into the binder, yep.
Thank you.
And they were made aware of it as well. Uh, Al, would you like to raise your hand? Al?
Yep. Okay, uh, the first sentence, Kurt, I'm just curious, um, you got a kind of a floating quote mark there before the word overall. And then you got a uh colon after balanced. We need either of those things. Can we clean that up?
Yes, Al, we can clean that up.
And also, um, bullet number one, there's a semi colon at the end of that. Should that be a period? Or are we gonna make all of these um four bullets? Like, uh, you know, we're going to have a conjunction at the end and say and, or we can say do they all hang out individually? How are we structuring that? Do you know what I'm saying?
No. I'm not an English guy, so if it's improper English, then tell us what it should be and we'll make.
It's it's interpretation, so if you have a semi colon after each of the first three bullets. And then after the third bullet, semi colon and this designation of OFB funds, meaning they're all together. It can't be construed individually, or you're going to have an or, or do they all just stand alone? Do you want periods at the end of all these? Because it sounds like you you want all four potentially to be in play. So they'd all stand on their own if applicable, correct?
Well, right now, the the first bullet point of eight percent doesn't matter. Because we've crossed the eight percent barrier, the second bullet point doesn't matter because we've crossed the ten percent barrier. So we're now actually on that third bullet point because we're over the twelve percent barrier. So the first two, no, no, but if we, but if you read it, so if we go below, so once the fund balance.
It's like it's tiered.
Yes.
Could be a period, Al, I would believe.
I would, that's what I was just going to say, Bob. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not an English guy, so, so what we can make that, uh, we can make that change.
Fight to it in the future, like I will, somebody will be arguing over that, we don't.
May I ask what the legal implications are of the punctuation marks? I'm guessing this isn't just um an English lesson.
No, there's legal implication potentially, Chris.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's whether they're disjunctive or conjunctive.
Yes. And we don't want people arguing that in the future, after I was looking at our ordinance on a committee twelve years ago. It it was all a disaster, and so, you know, we've taken great pains to be very careful with our language over the past decade. So I want to make sure that nobody's arguing over this in the future, that's all.
Yeah, so the key is that each bullet stands alone.
Okay, so um we will, we'll have Rory make those corrections. Send it to the Strategic Planning Committee so they are aware and then just have Rich give a day uh once over. So again, so uh understanding that, um, we'll keep the same motion and then, you know, we'll move forward. Any additional questions on the plan itself? Everybody understands what we're doing, the mechanics of it, the reasons why? Okay, hearing nothing, all in favor? Opposed, abstained, okay, the chair votes, I motion passes seven zero. Okay, the next part of this, um, as you can imagine. S and P had a lot of concerns about the town's overall finances. With regards to the COVID crisis, how we were doing collecting our revenue, how we were doing on our expenses. We took them through a pretty in-depth analysis of where we are for fiscal year twenty. They then started to ask some questions with regard to fiscal year twenty one, how we would handle uh any deficiencies in revenue. So we discussed, you know, putting a spending freeze in place, we discussed uh the TANS, which this board has authorized. We talked about our ability to uh use our cash reserve, which we have. But one of the things they talked about was, well, you know, what specific expenses would you identify right off the bat? That if something happened, that you can go ahead and say, okay, these are the expenses that we're not necessarily going to 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 use. So. We decided myself, Bill Zwicki, Doug, Tony, we went through a little process and we looked at some current expenses. Things that while are are important and good to be in the budget, if we were not able to do them in the next budget. That wouldn't have a huge impact on uh the town moving forward. So what we wanted to do was move some of these line items, still keep them in the budget. But move them from their existing lines into contingency lines. And what moving it to a contingency line does is it requires before that money to be spent. It needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen and then by the Board of Finance. So as an example, um, if you can see up in the, you know, uh, row two, column A. Or excuse me, yeah, the floater position, that uh that position is currently unfilled. That is in my budget. So the way it stands now is I can go out and hire a floater, the money's there and there's no issue. With it being in moved to contingency, so the line item would say contingency floater. I would need to come to the Board of Selectmen, I would need to get approval from the Board of Selectmen. Then I would need to get approval from the Board of Finance before that money would be moved back and the money could be spent. So again, we're trying to put some checks and balances in place to give us the opportunity to find some of these savings. In case our revenue numbers are not where they should be. So we've gone through and we've identified uh eight hundred and thirty six thousand one hundred and sixty one dollars. The ones that are in the yellow, um, so we'll do, can you guys see my mouse moving? So the ones here in the yellow, so the the floater, the Economic Development Director, um, town contributions to recreation, town contributions to health. The Police Deputy Chief, roadlining, community service, regular employees. Culture and arts purchase services and parks machinery and equipment, those are all specific lines in different budgets. We're going to take those lines and we're going to move them down to contingency. Where it will say contingency floater, contingency EDC director and so on, right down the line. So for the parks commission could buy their machinery and they'll need to come before the board. And then the finance and ask for permission to sell. At that point, we can evaluate where we are with our finances and we can make a determination if it makes sense to move forward. If we didn't do that, they can simply go out and buy a lawnmower that maybe they don't need, and I'm not saying that they would. But they can do that and there's really no checks and balances in place. So we're coming up with these ideas as a way to protect for layoffs and to protect from uh the cuts in needed services and things. So the floater position is currently not filled, the Economic Development Director is currently not filled. The town contributions to recreation, that are things like uh Little League, Pop Warner, soccer. Those types of things, health gets into things like team, uh, the pumpkin festival, those types of things. The Deputy Police Chief, there are two positions, only one is currently filled. Uh, roadlining, that is the roadlining project that we do each year. Uh, the community service, regular employees, we keep eighty thousand dollars in a line item in the community services budget. To pay for primarily camp and then other programs that are going on, camp being the biggest driver to the cost uh to that line. So we just talked with Mary that we're probably not going to have camp, so again, it makes sense to be able to move some money out of there. Culture and arts, their purchase services, they get twenty thousand dollars a year, that's what they put on their summer concerts and their different festivals. With the understanding that a lot of that is not going to take place this year, we moved ten thousand dollars and then parks their machinery and equipment. They are good with their equipment for the time being, so again, we're not saying no to this stuff, we're just saying move this to contingency. The next section down, so the orange capital. That is money that we specifically have in capital for different projects. So we have money we put aside each year to replace the turf, we have extra money that goes to town buildings for repairs and maintenance. We have additional money that goes to our roads for pothole repairs, things like that. We have money that we put aside every. We have money that we put aside every year for reevaluation. So we prepay reevaluation over the five years, so that way we have the money put aside for when the time comes. OPEB is the contribution we make for... What that is, is other retirement benefits other than pension. And then Public Works, as we know, buys a brand-new 550 or equivalent of equipment every year. So that money is not going to be moved from capital. That money is going to remain in its position in capital, but is simply going to be identified in this plan as a potential source. The last spot is the annual capital plan of $3,000, which this board usually in June or July usually present the capital plan for the next fiscal year to you guys, and you vote on that. That's what funds that capital plan. So combined, we're going to move... We're going to use or create a plan that has $836,161. I'm gonna be sending, assuming this board is comfortable with all of this, I'm gonna be sending a memo to the Board of Finance. So at their meeting next Tuesday, they will move the items that are in yellow, the regular budget items, the $324,161. They will move those to new contingency lines, and that's where they will sit. Again, the money is still in the budget, these things are still funded. We're just creating a mechanism to have a little bit more control in case we run into some issues with the COVID crisis. So what questions does everybody have? And I don't know if I can see everybody anymore, so if you raise your hand and I can't see, I'm sorry. All right, so I'm gonna go with... I'm just gonna go down the line. Okay, I see Chris waving. Go ahead, Chris.
Okay. I know the way it is used. It can be weird when you're in full screen. So basically, what this plan is, is if we do hire a floater to replace the person that left, it would require two boards of approval, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Kurt, this is Bob.
Yep.
Is that full value on all those line items, basically? So you're moving everything over, or did you do percentages of certain things?
Um, full value on the floater, the Economic Development Director, town contributions to recreation, town contributions to health, deputy police chief, roadlining, community service, regular employees is half. Culture and arts purchase services is half, and the parks, machinery and equipment is the full amount.
Okay.
Because again, some of them, it's not realistic. I mean, culture and arts, we'll still put something on, so we can't... It'd be kind of disingenuous to move the whole thing.
Yeah, that's where I was heading. You leave something for them too, as well, in their standard budget. And just move everything else, it's gotta be... Right. Thank you.
I mean, it would be nice to rehire the floater position. Could we get by without it for the fiscal year? We could. You know, it'd be great to hire an Economic Development Director. Could we get by for the fiscal year if we needed to? We could. You know, could we operate with just one deputy police chief for a year? I think we could. But, you know, these are positions we'd like to fill, but it just gives us some options. Now, things could go great. Our tax collection could be higher than anticipated. We could be moving in a positive direction, you know, by September, and we're doing well. Then at that point, you know, we can certainly move these things back if we want. But again, that's the decision of this board and the Board of Finance. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, this is Bob. And this is for a specific time period. I think you're putting together the legal ability to do this. How long would this time period last, or is it indefinite? How does that work?
I think it's gonna be a wait-and-see at this point. I wouldn't expect anything, at least until October. You know, we'd probably wanna see how that first quarter actually comes in, because, you know, that's the one with the tax deferrals. You know, if we get through that and we've collected, you know, 80% of what we had projected, then, you know, we're probably gonna be okay. But if we're hovering in the 30s or 40s, you know, we could have some problems. So we just want to be as proactive as possible.
Right, so the criteria is what we get back from taxes, and we reevaluate back in October.
Yep. And, you know, we're still waiting on a final rating from S&amp;P. So it's the little things like this that they like to see, because it shows that the town is being proactive, that the town has a plan in place, that it's not flying by the seat of its pants. So it's little things like that, that is the difference between AA+ and, you know, AAA. Not that we're gonna get AAA, but I mean, AA and AA+, little things like that.
Chris, add, I mean, that's a great... I like how you're proactively looking at this and being prepared for that. Fantastic.
What it... Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, so we'll go Chris, then Rob.
Would it be appropriate...
Because I don't want Rob to stand there holding his hand up.
Would it be appropriate and/or advisable to put a reevaluation date on this? Instead of going, basically until further notice, as Rob pointed, as Bob pointed out, if, say, we'll reevaluate, let's say, August 1st or thereabouts, just to throw our date out there. Just to have something concrete where we have to reevaluate everything and see where we're at.
Um, no, I don't think that date is needed, Chris, because it's gonna be based on the inflow of the tax revenue and the overall impact. You know, if you had to put a date on it, then I would probably say November 1st, simply because you wanna get through that first quarter when the deferral process is set up, see how we come out of it, and then now give a month, because all those folks that could defer July 1st are gonna have to make those payments in the month of November. So if you wanted to put a date on it, it would be November 1st. But if, you know, let's just say the roadlining, as an example, if, you know, Brian Nesteria came to us and, you know, made a passionate plea as to why he needs to stripe the roads, and we make a decision in September that we're gonna move that money, and the Board of Finance agrees, then that money moves. So it's not necessarily locked in. It's just gonna put that mechanism in place, where now Brian can just say, all right, I'm gonna go do $10,000 worth of roads, I have the money. He gets the PO, and he does it. He doesn't have to communicate with us, he doesn't have to communicate with the Board of Finance. He's not gonna know our current financial position. The Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance do, so we can make those tough decisions that, no, we're gonna hold off on this for the time being. So if people feel comfortable saying, let's put a revisit date on this, I'd be okay with that. But I'm not sure if that would have the impact that you'd want it to, because it's gonna be so... It's gonna be absolutely volatile. Does that make sense?
I agree. I definitely understand, and I will prepare.
Okay. Uh, Rob, I think you had your hand up too?
Yeah, a quick question. The $836,000, where did that number come from? Under what guidance? Is that a percentage of something, or you guys just went by a few ballpark? Where did that number come from?
Started on page one of the expenses and went to page 36. I mean, there was nothing scientific to it. It was just go through each budget individually and take a look at what could people... If it had to be put off for a year, what could we honestly be okay with?
Okay.
Everything on this list is needed. Don't get me wrong. No.
Okay, I didn't know if you were shooting for square between 3/4 and 1 million or anything like that.
Yeah, no. I mean, this is probably about 0.86, 0.87 of a mil, give or take, in that ballpark. So, I mean, it's, again, sizable. You know, it is a little counterintuitive to what we try to do, but S&amp;P was a little upset that we did not raise the mil rate, because they thought that if you raised the mil rate, so let's say we went up a quarter mil, you have extra revenue coming in that you can now use to offset revenue that doesn't come in. And, you know, we made the, I guess, the argument, and hopefully they got it, that the Board of Finance thought it was important to keep the mil rate level, because they wanted to give the residents a break with everything that's going on. They thought that just psychologically, it makes more sense. People losing their job, people, you know, earning less, those types of things, that having a lower mil rate would be a better thing. So it's two different ways to look at things. Their biggest concern is making sure that we protect the fund balance at all costs. So the more things that we can put up that show we have mechanisms that we're not gonna get to the fund balance, that's what they kind of wanna see. So the order of things would be these, we'll call them cuts, for lack of a better term. It would be the TANs, and it would be some use of fund balance. That's kind of the process we would go through when we got to that point. Again, the biggest issue is cash flow. You know, we can make estimates, and we have as to how the first quarter is going to go, but no one really knows until the tax receipts actually start coming in, so... We need realistically about $3 million a month to run the operation. So, oops, sorry. So any other... I don't know if I'm missing anybody. Anybody else have their hand raised? Trish, Emery, Al, you're on page two. No? Okay. Everybody else is good? All right, so then, at this point, I'll entertain a motion to allow the first selectmen to create a memo of recommendation to the Board of Finance to present to them the Excel spreadsheet titled FY '21 Targets COVID for recommended changes to the fiscal '21 budget.
Emery, so...
Hold on, Chris, Bob.
All right, so Emery made the motion, Chris seconded. Any further discussion? Everyone comfortable with my explanation? And again, this has been discussed with Doug, Tony, and Bill Zawicki, the chairman of the Board of Finance, and they are all on board. So... And Rich also gave it a legal blessing of approval, that everything that we're doing is okay and above board. So Monica, if you could please make sure that part is added to the record. We can't see Monica, but hopefully she got that, so... Okay, with no other comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes, I motion passes 7-0. Okay, item number eight, discussion and take possible action regarding...
Hey, Kurt.
Is that somebody? Yep.
That's... It's Monica.
Hi, Monica.
You wanted to make sure I put in the record?
Uh, that this plan was reviewed by town council?
Oh, right. Rich...
Better, yep.
And Tony. Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so item number... Okay, so item number eight, discussion, take possible action regarding EDC recommendations. Okay, so I want to give everyone an update as to where we stand, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Rich, who is going to kind of go through how we're going to progress forward. I know there was some concern, and I don't take any offense to this, about me being a part of this process, and that, you know, Emery and Rich would handle the negotiations part of that. So we're gonna do things a little bit differently, and Rich will kind of talk us through that. But before I turn it over to Rich, I did have the conversation with Sheila. I got questions from a few of you. So I spent about 45 minutes going through the questions. I have all of the details, but once Rich discusses how we're gonna move forward, at that point, at the meeting that we have for that, then I will share all of that information. So Rich, I'll turn it over to you. If you can just give everyone an update as to how we're gonna move forward. People can ask their questions, and then we'll just kind of go from there.
Thank you very much, Kurt. So as you all know, we act in accordance with the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, and there are provisions dealing with the recruitment and selection of an executive-level employee of the town. And one very important section is Section 1-200, Subpart 2, the definition of a meeting. And I'll come to that in a second. Meeting means any hearing or other proceeding of a public agency, and it goes on from there, and we, as a town, of course, we're a public agency. Meeting does not include, and this is the important part for how we're gonna go about this process, meeting does not include any meeting of a personnel search committee for executive-level employment candidates. And I'll stop reading there, because that's the provision that's important. And then when you go to 1-207, a personnel search committee means a body appointed by a public agency whose sole purpose is to recommend to the appointing agency a candidate or candidate for an executive-level employment position. So... What I'm recommending is that the Board of Selectmen be designated by the first selectman to be a personnel search committee for an executive-level position, and that is the Economic Development Director's position. That would then give us the ability to basically meet without having to notice the meetings and to be able to discuss the various things that, for example, Kurt wanted to come back and tell you, and also protect some of the various things in terms of the identity of some of the applicants. You may get a variety of applicants who are holding positions in other communities. And this exception to the Freedom of Information laws in terms of the meeting requirement and the personnel search committee requirement exists to give a municipality an ability, a process, if you will, to review qualifications, to review the candidates, to interview if necessary, and then to make a recommendation back to the appointing authority. So that is how I would suggest we proceed on a going-forward basis. And we can organize that through a series of Zoom calls after that. But I think the first and important thing tonight is to designate the Board of Selectmen as the Personnel Search Committee for the position of the Economic Development Director for the town of Seymour.
Okay, so any questions from anyone to Rich on what he has just spoken about? So the one thing that we'll do is we could... Oh, Trish, I'll get you in just one second. The... So it's going to be the six of you, and Emery will lead the meetings. So I will not be involved, and I will simply be a resource that you guys will call if you have things that need to be done. That'll all be done in conjunction with my office, or through my office, I should say, but I will not be a voting member of the group. And I will only be involved in conversations that you want me to be involved in. Emery, as a deputy, will, I guess, lead this process with Rich, which is what we discussed at the, I believe, the last meeting or the meeting before that, anyway. Okay, so Trish, you were, I don't know, either trying to flag down an airplane or wanted to ask a question. I'm not sure which.
Well, you said any questions. I raised my hand, and you kept going. I feel like I missed something critical Rich might have said, and I'm sorry, but is there any reason that we're not utilizing the HR director first and then kind of filtering through possibly what any candidate he thinks are qualified?
Well, the HR director is a staffer. He could certainly be a resource. He could certainly be part of anything. The applications, if you will, or resumes, or whatever is received could certainly be directed to him. But the... I think it's important that this body is designated as the Personnel Search Committee, so you can have the freedom of communication. For example, the Board of Police Commissioners acted in that fashion when it was going through the police chief interviews. I mean, there are a variety of candidates who are sitting deputy chiefs in other departments, or might even be a police chief in another department, for example. So you may get, I mean, I know there's been talk about one candidate in particular, but you may have other candidates in addition to that one who's serving in a similar role, or has served in a similar role, or is employed in another place. So this method under the Freedom of Information Act gives you the ability to do that. If you don't designate yourselves... If you don't designate yourselves as the Personnel Search Committee, then any communications from the HR Director to you would basically have to be done on the public record. And that can cause problems for candidates.
Okay, fair enough, thank you.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions? So Rich, do we have to actually make a motion to create this Personnel Committee, or can we just?
I mean, I think you could designate the Board of Selectmen, Kurt, as first selectman. I think you could certainly do that, you could certainly also entertain a motion from the floor doing that. Either way will work.
I think we'll just keep it simple then, so I'll designate the sixth selectman as the Personnel Committee for the position of Economic Development Director. And then you can use my office or professional staff as this to see fits. Meetings will be set up and run, as we said, by the deputy, so she'll make, you know, make all the contacts and things. Again, utilizing my office to assist with that, so. Assuming there's no issues or questions with that, everyone's good?
If I can just add something, Kurt, I don't know if a word cut out, and this is really for Monica. Designate the Board of Selectmen as the Personnel Search Committee for the position of Economic Development Director.
Monica, do you have that? Wait, let's see if her mic comes back.
Yes, I do, I have designate, Kurt is designating the Board of Selectmen six members as the Personnel Search Committee for the executive position of Economic Development Director, and would utilize your office, but Kurt will not be a member of the group. The meetings would be led by Anne Marie and Rich. Correct?
Anne Marie, if I may, Anne Marie will run the meetings, you know, I'll serve as Town Council.
Right.
Okay, everybody's comfortable? And then you guys can just, through Anne Marie, just let myself and my office know what support or information you need, and we will certainly provide all that for everyone, okay? Now, Rich, one question of mechanics. So let's say the Search Committee decides that they want to hire, oh, I don't know, Jimmy Ryan, just going to make a name up. And the hiring, do they hire the person, or do they make the recommendation back to the Board of Selectmen?
Correct, the recommendation goes back to the appointing authority, that's correct.
Okay. And I would be able to vote at that point, but I would just be one of seven votes?
Yes.
So we'll just go from six to seven?
Could the person, and again, just try to understand the mechanics, would the Personnel Committee be able to start the negotiating process prior to coming back to the full Board of Selectmen? Because let's be honest, the six pick the person, I mean, my vote doesn't matter, I'd just like to be a part of the end vote, but they can actually start the negotiating process at that point as well?
Yes, because in many instances, you're, the candidate is going to want to agree upon a compensation package. And, you know, it can't be a theoretical thing, so you can work it out, and the entire package goes back to the Board.
Okay. I mean, I know at that point, my vote is just symbolic, because if the six of them have already decided, then so be it, but I just want to be able to actually vote on that, that's all. So, okay, so everybody's good with the process, everyone understands the process? All right, so we, Rich and I will circle up with Anne Marie, we'll get her whatever tools she initially needs to get everything going, and then she will reach out either directly to the five of you or have communication sent through my office, whichever she prefers to get this going. All right, so thank you, we'll move on to item number nine. And I'm going to share my screen again. We're going to, Rich is going to comment, and then Anne Marie is going to make multiple comments. As she is a sitting member of the WPCA, so I'm going to defer a lot of this to her because she has the most kind of frontline information. But as a part of the process, the WPCA, as we know, is its own entity, it has a board, but by charter, they are required to do certain things to pass their budget. One of those things is to send us a detailed budget. So I'm going to put up to you the budget that was sent to us by the, whoops, hold on, I did that wrong, by the WPCA. And here it comes. So for a roughly $1.8 million budget, it is one page, and you can see it on the screen here. This budget is an increase of user fees of 10%. So as you can imagine, number one, the just increase of 10% is alarming, but the fact that there is absolutely no detail whatsoever in this budget is absolutely ridiculous in my estimation. I'll let Anne Marie speak to the process itself, but it was my understanding that their meeting began at 6 o'clock, and the members received the budgets at 6:23 via email, and then were asked to vote on it shortly thereafter. You know, we know how we do things on this board, generally you get information, you're given two weeks to digest it, ask questions, prepare yourself. I think we go through a pretty open and transparent budget process with the town. This does not seem to be the case with the WPCA. So Anne Marie, if you want to add a little bit more color, please feel free to do so.
I can add so much color. Can I go into a little bit more detail, though, Rich?
Yes, please. Yeah, Rich will stop you if you get off the rails.
Thank you. So as we know, this town of Seymour has had their WPCA run by an outside contractor for the past 20 years, meaning we do not employ the people that run the WPCA. Veolia has had it for the past 20 years, they continue to have it, the Chairman of the Board, we just changed Chairman maybe four years ago, but he was a co-chair, same co-chair, probably for the past 15 years. So he and the other co-chair would go back and forth, and they would have their way of running it without really holding the people that are running the WPCA's feet to the fire. I was brought in to, because environmental is my background, right? So Paul Roy put me on that board when they said, oh, they have X amount of money, let's see if we can get that money. The money in the Water Pollution Control Authority is protected under the Clean Water Act, which is a federal guidelines, okay? The town cannot take the money out of the WPCA, put it into their fund balance, use it for sidewalks, use it for paving roads. We, as a town, cannot touch that money, any monies that is put into that have to be used specifically for the WPCA, upgrades, improvement, your O and M plans, five-year capital plans. And that is where everybody saw the money, let's take it, we can't. So we then said that they're a separate entity, which they are. But however, they haven't made an improvement to that plan in 20 years. Now, Rob, you do environmental work as well, you know that you have to have a five-year capital plan, you know that equipment breaks, you have to have a process put in place, you have to have a P and M plan, you have to have some sort of maintenance plan put into place. They have absolutely none. Every year, we receive the budget this way, and we ask for the background. And every year, we don't get the background. So when I got the budget at 6:23 on Monday, I asked questions. This is what they gave us, they're supposed to be working with NAFIS and Young, who is our engineering company, to come up with a capital plan, and Jonathan worked on the budget by himself.
Jonathan is the employer from Veolia.
From Veolia. So I am asking that we, as a board, have to accept this budget or kick it back. I'm asking that we kick it back because there is nothing that goes with this. We had, can I talk about the truck? Rich?
I don't have an issue.
Well, I think that's a public matter that was discussed at your meeting, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, so go right ahead.
So they were sending their trucks out to B, to another facility to have their Federals done, DOT trucks have to have their Federals done every year to make sure that they're safe to go on the road. The guy, the firm was doing the DOTs, he was doing the Federals, but they weren't, he, Veolia, who runs our company, was not making the changes, or the improvements, or the needed mechanics to the truck. The truck is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kurt, it's over 20 years old, it's a 1993 truck. The tires have not, 19, what, it's a 30-year truck?
It's almost 30 years old, yeah.
Almost 30 years, the truck, the tires have not been replaced in 20 years. There are issues with that truck. Now, knowing we had the issue with the tractor-trailer incident two Saturdays ago, it being out of compliance, all the trash got into the river, we have a Veolia person driving a town-owned vehicle that is registered and insured in the town of Seymour, going on highways, taking fecal matter, biohazardous waste, really, to Waterbury or to another facility on a highway. If he gets into an accident in that truck, who do you think the liability falls upon? The town of Seymour. They knew this truck was not safe because the person has told them it wasn't safe, and they continued to go with it. They finally brought the truck because we're looking at being economically sound by having, if we have vehicles, let Public Works work on them because they are town-owned vehicles. And Public Work took the truck and they marked it out of service. Veolia now says, well, we have to go rent a truck, it's going to cost us $300 a day, or it's going to cost us X amount of money a day to take the waste from our facility to either Waterbury or, you know, Bridgeport, or wherever they have to take it to. And they want to charge us for it because they failed to maintain our vehicle. We asked, go ahead.
No, as you say, this is a $400,000 piece of equipment that Anne Marie has said is almost 30 years old, that hasn't been properly maintained. And they have no plan for how they're going to replace this piece of equipment. And looking at this budget, one would think that something like that would be identified. And again, it's not. They've had to build off what Anne Marie said, they had a truck whose brakes weren't working the best, so they had a roll of paper towels put underneath the brake pedal to allow the truck to actually stop.
They had over, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
So because a truck is X amount of pounds, you have to have a CDL license to drive this truck. It has air brakes. Every truck that you have to have a CDL license to drive, you have to do pre and post inspections on. They pencil-whipped the pre and post inspections because they never emptied out the air brakes. There was over five gallons of water and sludge in the air brakes, condensation. So when I, go ahead, Chris.
When you say pencil-whip, you're basically saying they lied, or in the Navy, we call it gun-decking?
You would call it gun-knocking, some people would say they lied, some people, and we had, and the Director says, well, yeah, after asking our guys over and over again, they said they didn't want to climb underneath the truck to undo the valve.
So they lied on their maintenance reports?
They lied on their maintenance reports, absolutely.
Are we in the process of disciplining the workers who did this?
We cannot discipline them.
Okay.
Because they do not, they work for Veolia, Veolia has to do that, that is something the Rich and Attorney Proto are going to work on, I would assume, Rich?
Well, so the WPCA is a separate entity, right? I mean, we really, you have Anne Marie there as one select person who happens to be a member. So we. I'm hearing some of this for the first time. And I would think when you're done commenting on this budget, I would think I'll work with Anne Marie to pen a letter on behalf of the town of Seymour to the WPCA and to Veolia, the contractor, regarding this truck and regarding the situation that Anne Marie just described, among other things.
Among other things, Kurt, can I go into the NOV?
Yes, just tread lightly.
I will. So we have received over the past five years, three NOVs, which are notice of violations due to permit exceedances. Our permit, our discharge permit, which is given out by the state of Connecticut, has the town of Seymour's name on it. Even though Veolia is the operator, if there was any monetary violations or monetary dues owed, the town of Seymour would have to pay that. I took issue with a couple of the managers that were running the facility because they failed to notify us in a timely manner that we went out of compliance. Under the Connecticut General State Statutes, and under any wastewater permit, it clearly states, and even a hazardous waste permit, it clearly states, you must notify within 24 hours of any violation of discharge. They failed to notify, even though they knew, they failed to notify the chief operator of the town, which is our first selectman. They failed to notify the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Granted, it was not a huge amount of chemicals that would kill the fish, or a huge amount of issues that would, you know, cause harm. It could have been a pH violation, it could have been, you know, we didn't claim our nitrates from the breakdown of the nitric acid. It could have been that, but it's still a notice of violation, we were still out of our parameters. I had stated three times that we need to do this, and I was reprimanded because I went after the operations manager who failed to notify us.
Anne Marie, isn't this stuff that would be inside the contract? It seems like they're operating outside the contract that we would establish with them.
So funny you should mention said contract. They stick to the contract when it best suits them. Operating within the parameters is part of their contract.
Right.
Yes. But nowhere, as I was told, does it state, I must notify the first selectman if we are out of compliance. They notified the Chair at the time, who the Chair at the time was like, ah, don't worry about it.
I have, I'm going to interrupt, why are we giving them a truck and doing any of this? I understand they have to do work for the town, but if we know that they, they're always difficult, they never have a budget put in place that is substantial enough to really understand everything they're spending the money on, they have no capital plan, we know they're abusing their rights within the town or working within the town, why are we giving them anything? They want to be independent, then they should be operating 100% independently.
They can't operate independently. Go ahead. Go ahead, Kurt.
No, I was going to say, that's the point, that's the point of why all this was, is being brought up and being discussed. Obviously, the budget, we would like to have rejected and sent back to them for at least some information on something. But we've also asked Rich. Uh, but we've also asked Rich to look at some different avenues as to how, uh, this board can move forward, uh, to make some type of changes to the current system.
Right, can I, can I?
So he's go-
I'll go a little, uh, onto Trish. So because they are a separate entity, you know, they have their own separate budget as required under the Connecticut General State Statutes. They have to have their own separate budget. They have to act as a separate entity. They took that as, we are a separate entity and we don't have to answer to the town.
When does this begin?
If they're using our truck and they have a CDL license, they are required every time that driver gets in a car
to file a report that it's a safety vehicle to drive.
Absolutely. Bob, you're on mute. Ab- absolutely. Absolutely, they have to. And when asked, I am being a bully. I am being a bully on this.
Well, good, because this is absolutely ridiculous, and I think, I understand they can't operate. Uh, we shouldn't be giving them a truck. That's, that's really the end of it.
We have to give them a truck because we have to, but Trish, we have to give them a truck because they have to take our town's waste.
Well, then they need to report back to the town with annual inspections or when they need to be filing reports with us. That's just not acceptable.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you. And I, I would actually hold that board accountable for not asking to look at these items before, but what I like to do is just look at that whole board altogether and bitch, Rich, stop me if I, if I-
Well, why don't, why don't we stop here for a second? Let me kind of wade in a little bit on this, uh, because, uh, your WPCA exists as a matter of charter. And, uh, if you go to section twelve point twelve, it, it's comprised of five members administrative appointments, uh, for a term of four years that were appointed by this body. Uh, in, in twelve point twelve provides that the authorities shall prepare an annual operating budget covering the same fiscal years the town's general fund. The prepared honor before July one shall be shared with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. The annual budget shall be prepared in sufficient detail to provide the Board of Selectmen and Finance meaningful information. So what you're doing, when you're looking at this document tonight, you're determining if this is meaningful information. So on the, on, to, to cut through this a little bit, in terms of just this, uh, if you don't believe that this is sufficient information and that you should have a more detailed line item budget in terms of the operations, uh, then I, I think it's incumbent upon this board to, uh, to do a motion that, uh, to reject this budget on the basis that it is not, does not provide meaningful information in accordance with Charter Provision twelve point twelve. So, I mean, that's the first thing I'd like to say. The second thing is, um, Kurt, how, you know, um, uh, are- Yeah, Amory was, uh, going into, uh, she wants us to look at the whole board. Um, you want me to continue on this, uh, subject at this time, or just stop with this particular issue, the, the operating budget?
Um, well, I think we definitely should see, I, I take the temperature of the rest of the board. Um, you know, obviously, we're both a little outraged. We're a little closer than the rest of you to all of this, but, um, can I say that over the last, uh, nine years now that I've been in office, this has been a constant battle. Um, so I think it's time, at least in my opinion, to make some changes, and I think exploring whatever opportunities are available to us, and Trish, just to circle back to yours, you know, they purchased the truck through the WPCA funds. Um, it's, you know, we, we insured it. It's one of our plates and everything else. Uh, the reason we discovered this is because we reached out to them saying, oh, sorry, we have the capacity to help with the repairs. So we'll provide free labor. You're just gonna have to pay the parts.
That, that's not fair enough, but this is a huge liability to the town.
You're right.
My issue, we're taking-
Oh, no, that's, that's what I'm saying. Now, we-
They're managing it.
We, we, correct, correct. And again, that's why we're, we're to the point that we're at. So to, to Rich's point, if, unless there's any disagreement from this board, uh, would you like to have Rich dig into this even more and continue down a path of seeing what structural changes can be made, whether it's contractual, whether it's with the board? Um, what's everyone's thoughts on this?
Kirk, can I ask a question? What, what are the terms on the contract with Violia right now? Are we on the annual, is it year-to-year, or is it five years? What are the terms?
Uh, off the top of my head, I believe we have four years left. It was a ten-year contract?
Yes.
How many?
It's a ten-year contract. We have four years left. Prior to our ten-year con- contract, it was a twenty-year contract.
And the board at that time wanted to do another twenty-year contract, and we told them no.
Now, now, mind you, in the twenty-year initial contract, there has been no upgrades to the WPCA. So this increase that you're seeing, Kirk, can you scroll your screen up, please? Because I'm, I'm sitting there pushing my screen and the thing's not moving. Thank you. Um, so you're seeing the rate per a hundred cubic feet. Um, they went up five percent. The five percent is up because there is no money to, there's no plan, there's no five-year plan to, you know, for our flocculent, for the clarifier, for the sludge dryer, for, you know, a new truck.
And, Amory, if we, if we kick, or Rich, either, if we kick the budget back, what is the likelihood that they're just gonna play games and submit the same budget? I mean, do we have to ever, are we to the point where we have to accept it?
Let me, let me, uh, so you have multiple issues here, right? I mean, you have multiple things. One, you have, uh, some operational issues that you want to uh, go on record about, the town truck, uh, the lack of maintenance, the lack of a capital plan, all those sorts of things. We can communicate that. I'll put together a letter that communicates that. Um, both to the board and to, uh, Violia. Uh, secondly, if you send this back on the basis that it doesn't constitute meaningful information, uh, I'm sure that will prompt some kind of dialogue. Uh, either they're going to provide greater detail in, in a sufficient way, or they're going to do just what you said, Trish. They're gonna stonewall you or give you, um, not even lip service.
Um, what, what is the point? I think, Rich, my question is, what is the point of sending it to us if we don't have any weight to say we're not, we're gonna continue kicking this back to you until you-
So one of the things that I started looking at is if you want to make a major structural change, we're on, we're under contract with an operator that has a long history operating both your plant and a number of plants throughout the state and in other places. So you have an operator who knows how to run a facility. Uh, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna prejudge that. I don't wanna jump into that. I don't wanna, uh, because a lot of things like, uh, what rate you charge and what you do in terms of capital improvements or policy decisions, uh, in terms of the board, not the operator, to some extent, right? So, uh, I, I don't wanna prejudge certain things about the operator right here, other than there are certain things that, that that are obviously deficient. So if you're looking at the board, what do you do? Uh, and if you want, I'll dig into that issue in greater detail. And there may be a path to, um, to, uh, make a wholesale change on that board. And if you're interested in doing that, I can dig into that issue.
So what other information do we have?
So, I know, as you raise your hand, but I just want to give one more thing. So, you know, we, we're talking about recent regionalization for the better part of Connecticut, to regionalize here, or regionalize our public works here, or regionalize, you know, um, WPCAs. So the Nagatuck Valley Cog, which I've been, I've been a part of, you know, for this, looking at the WPCAs throughout the valley of regionalizing them. You know, Derby, we know, has a cease and desist order. You know, they, they, they have major issues with their WPCA. And Sonya spent ton of money several years ago on their WPCA. So the cog has been looking for ways of regionalizing. And the WPCA has been, has been asked several times by the Valley Cog's engineering department, as well as their attorneys, to give us the drawings that they have on hand of the sewer layout. So that, you know, if we have regionalization, it goes to, you know, Route thirty-four. Maybe we can take everything from Route thirty-four and send it to Derby. Maybe that's the way they can look at it. Regionalizing who has a better wastewater treatment plant. Yeah, we, the town may have to pay for it down the road, but the EPA gave the states these funds to do this regionalization, not just in the valley, but through all the whole state of Connecticut, to regionalize. And every time they've asked the, the WPCA for this information, they've been blocked. Oh, we don't have the maps here. Oh, we can't find it, blah, blah. So then I end up getting the email. And I'm like, okay, Jim, can you go down and get the, the prints and send them to blah, blah, blah? And Jim were like, okay, but if, as an engineer, if I'm gonna send an employee down to get something, what am I gonna do? Am I gonna build, build them as a billable? Or am I gonna do it for free? You're gonna use it as a billable. So now that runs up our engineering fee because they don't want to regionalize. They don't want to expand, and this all has to do with previous past chairs who just want to sit there and say, we want to control it all. It's our WPCA. We've been running it for twenty years. We want to do it all. So now it's held up a lot of regionalization. It, it held up a lot of testing. It held up a lot of surveying. So it's just, I, I just think that having the same company run it and having the same board members on it, it's just this past year with people being told they have to, you know, they took a job or they did this and having to leave. Now with the board that we have on here, it, no one knows what's going on, and I'm trying to get everybody up to speed. And, and, and Jim Gallagher and Proto, it, it is, I think the people that we have on this board now, and please forgive me if I'm speaking wrong, Kirk or Rich, but I think if we're gonna have, if we're gonna do something with this board, we need to have people who understand um, wastewater treatment. We need to have people that understand environmental. We need to have people like our public works. They have been bullying me, not bullying me, they've been putting stops in because Public Works, we're gonna have them mow the property that we have our pump stations on, right? It only makes sense. The property is owned by the town of Seymour, yeah? So have our public works people mow the lawn. It's our property. I get, well, how do you think the sewer people are gonna feel if, you know, or the well people are gonna feel if the sewer people are paying taxes for this? Who cares? It's, it's town property. Well, why are we having them do this? We want our friends to do this. It's, it's, it's economically sound to have our own people look at it because they're looking out for us. Public Works is looking out for our trucks. They know that's, they know that's our liability, right? Five thousand dollars just to mow a lawn from May to October. Five thousand dollars is what they're paying a landscaper to mow the lawn. To me, that's ridiculous. Why wouldn't we have, why?
As we took over,
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, as we took over more of these services because of the, uh, capacity of Public Works, more of this is becoming uncovered.
Right, exactly.
So, uh, where maybe it's been able to be, uh, you know, kind of blurred a little bit in the past, um, these things are now coming to light. And to Amory's point, it's, some changes need to be made. Um, because there is, number one, liability concerns, uh, and number two, more importantly, it's, you know, it's the taxpayers or the rate users' dollars. And when you see the rate jumping as much as it is, and you look at their budget and all of the inefficiencies and sponsor money's not being spent properly, obviously puts up a bunch of red flags.
And the rates going back up.
I think it would be prudent. Right. So I, I think it would be prudent of this board, uh, to, you know, to have Risk, Rich take on this task of, you know, looking into what our different options would be. Um, and then have him report back to the board, and then we make a- Um, I don't think we need to, to make a motion to, um, for, for Rich to start looking at stuff. We will need a motion to reject, uh, the budget as it's been presented to us.
I made that motion.
So why don't we start with the budget? Let's go there.
Uh, Rich, yes.
All right, so, um,
If I, if I make-
I could see, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, for failing to provide meaningful information in accordance with Charter Provision twelve point twelve. Right.
Okay, so, so Monica, if you can amend, uh, the initial motion, Monica, to include that. And then, uh, I believe, uh, Trish won the race to make the motion, and I believe Amory came in second, so she gets the second. Um, but if you want to make a little asterisk that everybody jumped at the opportunity to make that motion, I think that would be appropriate. Um, so just under a discussion, is there any additional discussion, just on the budget aspect of it? Chris?
Oh, on the budget? No, the budget sucks. We know that.
Just, yeah, okay.
Um, that, I had other things to say about the WPCA, but not about it.
Yeah, we'll circle back to that in a, in a second. Um, okay, so nothing else specifically on the budget? All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes are motion passes seven zero. So we will work with Rich on uh, crafting a, a letter or a memo that'll come from the Board of Selectmen that will go to, uh, the WPCA, uh, Violia and their attorney, uh, not their attorney, but WPCA's attorney, uh, Attorney Proto. All right, so that takes care, takes care of the budget issue. We'll now talk about all of the other issues, or we'll take questions. So Chris, you're up. Go ahead.
I just want to point out that the act of falsifying maintenance blocks, um, what we colloquially called in the Navy as gun-decking, what we refer to as pencil-whipping, is a, um, i- i- it's crime. It's, you know, if we did that in the Navy, we went to the break. And it's not just a liability issue, it's a damn safety issue. Using toilet pa- toilet paper?
No, paper towels.
Paper towels, oh, well, that's, that, I mean, using paper goods on the brakes to make the truck stop is the biggest Jerry, in two thousand twenty, that's, what was duct tape not available? Um, I mean, this is the, this is the biggest Punch and Judy show I've heard in quite a while, both professionally and personally. And I am fully in, I want heads for this. I want people to be publicly sanctioned for this for putting drivers at risk, for putting the other, putting people on the road at risk of a catastrophe happening. And on our, I don't think this board is gonna tolerate that on our watch. And I am, Amory, I want to state it publicly for the record, I am fully in favor of anything that you're willing to do to rectify this issue, because I want heads.
So do I.
All right, any other, excuse me, any other thoughts or comments?
I'd like, uh,
No?
Yeah, just-
All right, so, I've got.
Yeah, I'd like to use the contract to make sure, um, we go through that contract with Fine Tews Cone to understand what the legal ramifications are of this as well. I think that's gonna be important because it's a lot of this stuff. I'm, I'm, I've dealt with the water industry for many years, and a lot of this stuff should be under contract with the town of how this is handled, and we probably want to take a look at that and revisit the contract.
May I also, what would, uh, one question I have, and this is more for Amory. What would the logistic challenges be of finding a new company or making changes, uh, when our contract is up in four years? Is that something that we should be planning for now? Or at least having contingency plans in place?
Yes. Yes, we, we should absolutely have contingency plans in place. How, um, there are environmental companies that run Apollo sites. You know, they have people that would run the system for you.
What is an Apollo site? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. An Apollo site would be an environmental company. They, they have a division that strictly goes out and they'll go to a facility and they'll run the facility, take care of the inspections. They will take care of the permits, make sure everything is followed to, under the EPA Connecticut General State Statutes as well as the DEP regulations.
Okay.
They call those Apollo sites. But also to run a wastewater treatment facility, one needs a Class 3 wastewater treatment permit to, to manage it, to run it. You have to have somebody there that has that permit. Then you can have somebody who has a wastewater Class 1 license to run it. We could, you know, there are several things you can look at. We can look at, you know, other companies when we go out to bid and, and see what other company bids come in. And, and, and look at them and look at the price. And maybe, you know, maybe somebody will cost us more. Can we say how much this, their, their contract is worth?
It's public record.
$1.8 million.
Chris, the, the short answer to that is year the track is over, we would start the bidding process like we did. So we would create specs through the engineers, put those out, have companies respond to those. And then depending on who was the low bidder at that point, we would enter into contract negotiations with them.
Would it have to be?
So we would start that about a year from the conclusion of the contract.
Okay.
Uh, no, we, we would use the regular bidding requirements. We could exclude, and Rich, correct me if I'm wrong, we could exclude people for stated reasons. So just because, you know, there's a low bidder doesn't necessarily mean they would be the best fit for the town of Seymour. We'd have to justify those reasons.
Right. Looking through the ECO database would give you, how many times has their company been fined through other contracts?
So anything else? Because if not, we can essentially turn Rich loose. But have him do some research and then, which is two weeks sufficient for you to come back with something? And if you come across something sooner, could you kind of just send it out to the board for review so they're prepared for discussions at our next meeting?
Yes, yes. We can do that.
Is everyone, everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes, very much, yes.
Okay, so Rich, if you could get going on that. And then, like you said, if you have something sooner and you'd like to forward that over, even if it's a, doesn't have to be an official opinion or anything. If you have some drafted stuff that you want the board to review so they're prepared for a more in-depth discussion two weeks from now, I think that would be, uh, that would be great with the goal of having an in-depth discussion and giving Rich some formal direction, uh, two weeks from now, if that works for everybody.
Yeah, just so you know, the WPCA.
Here are no objections or no objections. Okay, so we will move on to item number 10. Appointments, we have, uh, so at this point I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments dated April 7, 2020.
No move.
Motion by Chris. I was gonna say, this is the interactive part. We have a second?
Second by Amory.
Rob, bidding and smiled, so Rob makes the second. Is there any other discussion?
This is. This is the guy we had correspondence from, um, TENS, right?
Uh, yes, um, Bill King, Billy King was a former commander for the Police Department, longtime member of Great Hill Hoes. When he retired from the Fire Department, he went and took all the necessary courses to become a fire inspector. So it's good to have Bill back on board.
Great.
Um, so I don't think we actually have voted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes, I motion passes 2-0. Trying to hammer through this stuff. Okay, item number 11, tax refunds and abatements. We have two before, so at this point I'll entertain a motion to approve the tax, the report dated April 28, 2020, as presented by Susan Bolen, Assistant Tax Collector. I have a motion to do so.
No move.
Motion by Trish, and she's telepathically sending, sending that to me. Second by Bob Finley. Is there any discussion? Al, are you raising your hand for a question?
I was gonna second.
Al is not? Okay, all right, so hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes, I motion passes 2-0. Entertain a motion to approve the tax collector's report dated May 5th, 2020, as presented by Sue Bolen in our tax office. A motion? Motion by Amory. Second by Bob Finley. He nodded his head. Any discussion? Hearing all in favor? Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes, I motion passes 7-0. Thank you for that very vocal vote. Item number 12, transfers. We have no transfers before us this evening. So we'll skip on to item number 13, correspondence. We have a good deal of correspondence. We have the check registers for your viewing pleasure. We have a letter from the Seymour Oxford Food Bank from Tony and Terry, just thanking them for the help that we gave them and allowing them to keep open during the pandemic. We have a information packet from our HR Director, Chris Pelosi, with regards to the pay plan for non-union appointed and elected officials. This was the, the report that he had talked about. He's giving this to you for, in advance, for an opportunity to review it. Ask any questions. This will be on the agenda at our next meeting for further discussion. And me, David, wanted to give this to you in advance. We have several memos from Rich and his office. One regarding tax deferral and the effects on the WPCA. So how the decisions we made to defer taxes that impacts the WPCA payments. We have a memo giving some guidance on the federal emergency supplemental funding and how that'll be aid to municipalities. We have a memo on the Governor's Executive Order 7JJ. And that relates to the elderly and disabled tax relief and some information on land use and building permits. And the last one is, I'll get a memo from Rich regarding Governor's Executive Order 7MM. And that has to do with the changes to the outdoor dining process and, and everything that is currently going on. So those are all of the correspondence that's come in. So we will move on to item number 14, public comments. Rory, has any public comment come in during the meeting? Hopefully Rory is still there and hasn't fallen asleep.
No, give me one second, sorry. The new came in.
He was watching TV.
Listening, wrapped with attention. No public comment?
Yeah. No public comments, okay? All right, so we will move on to item number 15, selectmen's public comments. And you, we're going to go in the order that you appear on my screen. We're going to start from the top right, move across, and then that way. So Trish Danka, you are our lead officer. Do you have any public comment you'd like to make? Trish, you're on mute.
I saw that after I said, wow, I'm usually last. Thank you. Um, just that we are getting the, um, Seymour Strong banners have been going up. And just to let everyone know, so far we've raised $2,100, which I think is fantastic. And there's still some other orders that Grand Concept is putting through. And that's really all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Trish. Al?
Just want to tell everybody, stay positive and just keep swimming. We're doing a good job here, the best we can under the circumstances. And Kurt, I just wanted to ask you to tell everybody at Town Hall, they're doing a great job. I was down dropping a package off at the post office a couple of days ago. They have people adhering to all the rules, their social distancing. It's a couple of people at a time or whatever the rules are. They got them posted right on the door. I could see from my car when I parked. And, um, they're doing a great job. So I'm very proud of our community and how we responded to this. And Public Works has been great too.
Thank you, Al. I will certainly pass that along to, to the staff and let Public Works know. Amory?
Hey, I like I spoke a lot today. Just so you know, the DEP, um, has cleaned that catch basin out. They're working. Yeah, in the river, yes. They were working on it the day the truck overturned two Saturdays ago. Um, Leclair gave the okay. Ken Leclair, not the attorney Leclair, gave the okay to clean it. And we're actually, because the state was taking the bill for it anyway, so they cleaned it. And we are still, Kurt, correct me if I'm wrong, still trying to figure out who owns the property.
That's correct.
So we can move forward with that. But I know Rob and I were also working on a plan to make sure that stays cleaned if the town does end up owning it or if it is the town's responsibility. We'll figure something out. So tomorrow ends the parades. With tomorrow being the two, at the end of the last parade, it'll be 200 parades. And I am thankful to say that Nicole and I have participated in almost every single one of the birthday, anniversary. Oh my gosh, I haven't seen this person in forever. Let's just do a drive-by graduation parade. Any type of parade you can think of has been done. Um, so tomorrow's the end of them, so no more sirens going by at five miles an hour. So over 200 and it, it's been great. It's been fun to see the smiles on the faces and the tears on the, on, on the people's face. And everybody just coming out and supporting our, our emergency management system. It was, it was great. The Fire Department, the ambulance, the Police Department, as much as it was a hindrance. It was great to see the smiles.
All right, excellent. Thank you, Amory.
You're welcome.
Uh, Rob?
There we go. Just want to echo some of the other sentiments. I think Seymour's been doing a phenomenal job. Very proud of them, proud to be part of the great crew. Uh, and what I am going to pitch, let's do my weatherman shtick. There we go, Chance to Shine. That's the new branding for the. My Chance to Shine is the, uh, the new catchphrase and the new branding for the PCRC race that happens at Court, starts at Cory Walk in Oxford and goes around, um, around the valley. It's to benefit PCRC, which is a division of BH Care. Their main focus is children and families. And what I want a lot of people to think about right now that I hadn't even thought about was the families who are asked to shelter in place with an abuser. Most people just thought, oh, I gotta stay home from work. I can't go out. Now you're thinking about somebody, a child whose only safe place was being at school. And now they had to stop that. And there's some horrible situations, so the need is great. And as most of you guys have probably seen, fundraising events were canceled left and right. I know I was pushing you all to do the exchange mini golf. And we also helped to fund this event. So it's been horrible. So we did move the race onto a virtual platform. So starting on June 6th, which is my wife's birthday, I'm going to make her go walking with me. And we're going to do a virtual walk. I'm going to try to get a virtual ride in too. We'll take, this will take place over two weeks. So it's, if you can go to a chance to shine CT. We got a few hashtags. I'm sure we'll be able to do some links to that. If you could participate at all, they do, PCRC does amazing work in the valley. And the need is greater than normal. And the funding is less than normal right now. So that is my big plug. Thank you very much.
Rob, if you could, um, get that information over to me, we can get it out. And obviously get it to all the selectmen. We can get it out on social media and try to help push whatever we can, try to bring in some donors or volume or activity or whatever else we can do. So, okay. Chris?
All right, first off, um, thank you to all essential workers out there, whether you work in healthcare, whether you work at Griffin Hospital or at Wendy's. We see you and we're extremely thankful for the work that you've given throughout this difficult time. Thank you internally to Mike Mardansky. I had some questions about reopening restaurants in town. Can everybody hear me? My internet is really not behaving right now.
I can hear.
When are we presumed to come back? Okay, there we go. Thank you to Mike Mardansky for, I had some questions. He got right back to me and not only had answers for my questions, he was ahead of me on like having specific plans for specific restaurants in case they wanted to do outdoor seating. So he was really on top of that. So I want to give a provost to Mike. I want to also give a reminder to everybody that Oak Base One starts tomorrow. It think, that doesn't mean we're back to normal. The old concept of normal is more or less gone for the time being. Please be safe. Please, um, remain vigilant. Because the last meeting that we had, I mentioned a family friend who was sick. He has since passed away. He has died of COVID and it took a very healthy man out. Lastly, I want to commemorate the, um, lives of Luz de Carol, the former team director of Andonato, a former teacher at the Old Chatfield School and a former first selectman, Dan Brandon, who I didn't know, but has an impressive resume. So, um, just to commemorate the wonderful lives of these people. And everybody be safe and wash your hands.
Thank you, Chris. Rob, Bob, I went the wrong way, sorry.
That's okay. Um, just, you know, as we're starting to reopen, making sure that residents and, you know, follow the rules. And let's do a slow reopen or a soft reopening to get things kickstarted. Make sure we're on the right track and then move, you know, follow the state rules. It's, I just recommend everybody do that at this point. So we don't get a relapse and have to fall back into this, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Sarah. Mr. Taylor, if you'd like to add?
Just stay safe, be well, and it was a pleasure seeing all of you tonight.
You as well. Rory, anything we missed?
Parade?
Ah, yes, thank you, Rory, for that reminder. Okay, so while the Memorial Day Parade was canceled by the Parade Committee, the Parade Committee has come up with a good idea to kind of build off all of the emergency management parades that are going on. There are currently four living World War II veterans in Seymour. So what the Parade Committee would like to do is to form a, a, a little parade like that to go by the four different houses. Alex is kind of spearheading this project, so he's getting information to me. I'll pass that out to you. He sent me something earlier today, which I haven't had a chance to fully review yet. But with a parade route, he's talking to the different service chiefs to get them involved. I don't know if it's, I don't think it's going to be as big as a, a normal one because it's not just about going through one neighborhood. We're going to have to navigate to a couple of different parts of town. So we can kind of get two pieces of equipment from each group and then a few cars. I think that would be great. You're all invited to attend. I think Alex would be very happy if he can get a good turnout from the selectmen for this. I believe he's got signs, little stickers for your cars. So he's kind of going all out. We initially, it had said in the paper, 1 o'clock, but I think we're going to bring that time back down to 11:00. Just so it's not kind of. just so it's not kind of right in the middle of everyone's day. People, I'm assuming are gonna have some plans, at least with family. So at least they can get early, get this parade and then get home, hopefully to their families by, you know, 12:00 or 12:30 and still have the day with them. So look for more information tomorrow. And what's tomorrow, tomorrow's Wednesday, Wednesday and Thursday with kind of specifics. But I believe the tentative start time, as I said, is 11 o'clock at the high school. But that's just kind of the quick down and dirty.
He's yelling upstairs, it is a procession line, it's being called a procession line, eight miles, about 45 minutes.
Okay, I stand corrected, it is a procession line. Um, and that ends with a semicolon, not a period. So we will make sure that that is correct.
I'm listening, Miller, I'm still awake.
So, I know you are, I can see you, I like this, this different way, I can see everybody's faces.
I gotta get one of those things that goes in front of me like, like Rob has, he could freeze himself and then he can take a nap.
Can, can someone tell Al that he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to lean all the way into the screen to talk when he does?
I love it.
Because I know when Al's gonna talk because he leans forward.
I want a glazed donut to go.
So, oh man, this is a record for us, so two hours and 10 minutes. So is there anything else anyone would like to add?
No.
Too long. Rory, anything else that was missed?
I believe that's it. I would like a motion.
So with nothing.
Oh, I got it.
Wow. Yeah, I gotta give it to Chris because he leaned in Al Bruno style.
Yes.
Alright, so motion by Chris, second by Emery, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Chair votes, I have motion passes, 7-0, mark the meeting closed at 9:14 PM. So good.